Under the special meeting on Monday evening, March fifteenth. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Yes, Councilmember Gothols.
Here.
Councilmember Pappen.
Here.
Councilmember Lee. Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
I'm here.
And Mayor Rodriguez.
Here. Thank you. Okay, due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item you wish to comment on, when signed onto the Zoom call, use the raise your hand feature and you will be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand. And when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. We are going to move on to a study session, item number one, small business recovery and diversity and equity task forces, composition and work plans. And presenting for us this evening is going to be Kathy Climo. So yours, Kathy.
Actually, Mayor Rodriguez, I'm going to handle this presentation tonight.
Okay.
I'm just pulling it up. Is everyone able to see that?
It's good.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so we'll get started with the small business and diversity and equity task force formation. So just jumping right in to small business recovery. During the pandemic, the cities really provided three forms of assistance to our businesses. We've provided direct financial assistance. We've provided business operations and policy support, and we've provided outreach and resource facilitation. And so in terms of direct financial assistance, to date, cities contributed $820,000 to our businesses in various forms. Early last spring, we contributed $400,000 through the San Mateo County Strong Program for small business grants. Also last spring, we provided $120,000 for childcare rental support. And then just in our last council meeting, council contributed $300,000 to the Restaurant Brewery and Winery Relief Program. In terms of operations and policy support, we've had our temporary outdoor dining program on the public streets, which we've done at no fees for the businesses. And so far, the city has expended about $300,000 to date on our parklet program and our street closures. We've also had a permitting program that we put together for outdoor recreation and fitness operations in city parks while indoor gyms were closed. We have relaxed our zoning and parking requirements to allow for outdoor operations in private parking lots and shopping centers. And we also had a commercial eviction moratorium that ran from March through September of 2020. In terms of outreach and resource facilitation, we developed a webpage that sort of served as a one-stop shop to financial resources and other services that were available to our businesses. Our economic development team completed over 1,600 outreach calls to link our businesses to financial resources that were available. To support that, we also, and supplement that, we developed an e-newsletter for our businesses that has over 800 subscriber that we used to send out updates on new resources that are available. During the early stages of the pandemic, we actually had nine staff members working in economic development to help with all these efforts. And at the present, we currently have about four members of the staff in my office working on business support efforts. In terms of a task force, what we're recommending is that it's a staff-driven stakeholder group. And the reason for that is we would like to maximize flexibility and adaptability as we move forward in continued uncertain times. We're recommending that the membership really be comprised of local entities that are working to support the businesses. And so the Chamber, Sam Seda, DSMA, Nova Works, et cetera. And that being a staff-driven stakeholder group, it would also allow us to bring in new stakeholder partners at any time, would create a lot of flexibility and maneuverability for the task force. The focus would be on coordination of efforts and sharing of resources and just making sure that we're all doing what we can to support the businesses and not duplicating any efforts. And we also recommend that council consider forming a subcommittee that would serve as a liaison to the task force. And so moving on now to the diversity and equity task force, I want to start with what city efforts have been focused on so far as it relates to diversity and equity. And so far, those efforts have focused on representation in elected and appointed, on a point, excuse me, elected and appointed roles, both on city council and the boards and commissions, hiring and staff development, and community outreach and engagement. So with respect to representation on boards and commissions, those efforts have been evolving to continue to try to broaden our outreach during the recruitment process to ensure that we are able to recruit a broad cross-section of our community to serve, potentially serve on boards and commissions. We do have a board and commission demographic survey. The last one was completed in 2017, but there is currently an update in progress. And one other thing I wanted to mention is we do need to consider a review of our policies that could hinder diversity on our boards and commissions, such as the registered voter requirement that's in the charter. Well, with respect to hiring and staff development, we do have an equal employment opportunity plan. And what this plan does is it tracks the diversity of the city's workforce against the labor market every other year. And it tracks underrepresentation, not just across our entire workforce, but in specific positions and specific classifications. So we get really granular detail on how well we are representing the people that we serve. And what our last workforce plan showed was that we are increasingly more representative of the people that we serve, which is good. We have broadened our outreach for recruitment to attract more diverse candidates and more diverse staff to the city. And we've also formed an internal diversity, equity, and inclusion committee to promote an inclusive work environment here with the city of San Mateo. In terms of community engagement, this is also an area that we've been heavily focused on over the last year. We've been trying to increase our efforts to foster community conversations around diversity and equity. Our police department has started the Real Talk San Mateo series that has been very successful and very well attended. We also put together the San Mateo Together series during United Against Hate Week in November, where we had three virtual events to commemorate the United Against Hate Week. And the police department is also forming a new citizen community policing academy. And going forward, we will continue to look for opportunities to host additional workshops and community trainings focused on diversity, equity, and inclusivity. With respect to a diversity and equity task force, staff's recommending a similar format to the general plan subcommittee, which would be a subset of city council and board and commission members, and then potentially some nonprofit and/or community appointments. So if council chooses this structure, this subcommittee would be a Brown Act committee with formal agendas, publicly noticed meetings, and the ability for the general public to attend and comment. The recommended focus areas for the task force would be the board and commission recruitment process and our community engagement efforts. And then we would like to have the DEI, the internal DEI committee, provide updates occasionally on staff-level things that are going on with respect to diversity, equity, and inclusivity. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Gothols.
So Drew, how does this compare to the way other cities are approaching diversity and equity? Could we alternatively, rather than having a Brown Act board, could we designate an employee as a diversity and equity officer, serving for the city, giving us reports, directing various public meetings that might take place? And in that way, maybe prevent creating a new Brown Act board? I do think I'm interested in making sure that we have attention paid to this, that we are working towards our goal of inclusivity and diversity and representing our community as well as we can. I'm wondering what's the best way to get there and what will best serve the needs of the council? For me, having a diversity and equity officer, maybe even somebody who's already an employee, like an assistant city manager, would give us the ability to commission various studies, to look at, to take inventory of how the city's doing, and then to make specific goals that we can work into our work plan and have someone who's paying attention to that throughout the year. I'm just throwing that out there. Is that an alternative that you've seen in other cities?
Yeah, certainly, you know, other cities have chosen to go that route. In some cases, they have, they've actually brought a new person onto, onto staff to do that. I think that we are, from an internal perspective, we're doing that on a, on a committee level. We've got Denise Garcia and Selena Bavia Johnson, who are co-leading the Diversity Equity and Inclusivity Committee, the staff level committee. And that committee has about 30 members citywide, and it's, has broken out into six subcommittees with specific, that are, they're creating specific work plans. So, I mean, certainly, that is something that, that those efforts are going to continue at the staff level. And I think that, you know, depending on what council's interest is, that is something that we could probably absorb into, into that committee with, with updates to council, if that's the, the direction council wants to go.
I just.
Go ahead, councilmember, who is that? Councilmember Pappen?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay either way. I'm just really interested in the programming part of it. So however that gets effectuated is where my interests lie at this moment. I really think we could use it as a vehicle for the entire community, just as we did during the hate week. Those seminars were really terrific. I was also, um, at the CCG board, we were talking about this Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day. And I thought, that's in November, and I thought, well, maybe we could have more of a citywide event with programming like that. So it may be, as Councilmember Gothols is suggesting, you know, maybe if we do have, you know, sort of a staff designated person running it, then we could get those programs, you know, really shepherded by somebody that's staffed. But, you know, I'm open to it. I just wanted to know where my focus was. I'm looking, the other part, obviously very important as well, but I'm really looking forward to some, some good programming. So that's where I'm kind of coming from.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Councilmember Lee? You're on mute.
I had a question about what, what necessitates a task force to become subjected to the Brown Act or subject to the Brown Act? What, can you, can you help me, Sean, understand what, what triggers that? Because I've served on CACs and, you know, other kind of task force that we're not, we're not, we're, we're not part of the, we're not subject to the Brown Act. So I'm curious, like, why, why we would apply it and what, what would, like, what the threshold is?
Well, under the Brown Act, any board, commissioner, committee that is created by formal action of the city council is a legislative body subject to the Brown Act. There, there is a, an exception for advice, purely advisory committees that are composed solely of, of two members of the council. So when two members of the council from time to time will be tasked by the council to study an issue, make a recommendation, then that, that committee is not required to do the noticing and meet in public and all that. But that's a pretty narrow exception. Any other body that's formed to, by formal action of the council doesn't have to be resolution or, or ordinance, any formal action of the council to form a committee that is subject to, is a body subject to the Brown Act requirements of notice and, and public meetings.
Um, okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Yeah, thanks. So I appreciated what Councilmember Gothols had to say initially regarding more of a, in what Diane referred to, kind of like as a citywide approach. And I appreciate what was said about, that Drew said about the Brown Acted Committee with two council members, some commissioners and so forth. I'm wondering if it's possible that we could tell staff to go ahead and appoint a committee like that, but with no council members? That could be maybe have a staff member that we appoint to work with that group and can make reports back to the council from time to time. Would that be Brown Act?
So a staff-level committee internally appointed by the manager is, is not subject to the Brown Act. It's committee.
Besides that, I'm talking about besides that.
So are you talking about a committee formed by the council, composed of other folks outside the city?
We could endorse creation of other folks outside the council who are not staff and assign one staff person to work with that group of citizens.
So, okay, so you're suggesting that just encourage that some, a community group form on its own and then send a staff that is on person to that group?
Right, and it's open to the public.
Right.
But, but it's not Brown Acted because, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would work if there is a group in the community, a private group in the community that's willing to sort of take on that task.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I had a question for Drew. And this actually question came from a member of the public who, who put forth this proposal for the small business of subcommittee. Do you think that we have internal expertise within staff to, like, medical expertise or, like, public health expertise on, on the team? The, the specific suggestion was that we should try to get somebody on there that, that has some sort of medical health background. What do you think about that?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I don't think we have that on staff. That's not, not a role we, we typically play in the city. So, you know, and I think we, we would welcome different, different levels of expertise. And yeah, they don't necessarily have to be business-focused or small business-focused. So someone with a medical background or health, public health background would be helpful. And, and I'd be happy for them to have them contact me.
Okay, and the other, the other point, and I'm surprised I'm beating Rick to this, but is there any way to have, like, labor represented into this subcommittee? Basically, just making sure that, that workers' perspective is going to be on, on this?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Thanks. See, I think Councilmember Lee, is your hand before questions?
Yeah, thank you. I had another, I just, I, in terms of the diversity equity task force, I wanted to, I wanted to kind of reorient back to staff and ask you, how, you know, how do you feel like this task force could best serve our goals of improving community engagement? Do you feel like there are sufficient structures in place and then also, like, ambassadors and bridges to community groups and stakeholder groups? Do you feel like the formation of, of a sort of a broad base of, of community representatives in the form of, like, you know, as members of a task force could better support our engagement strategy and, and implementation? And, and if so, I mean, do you, like, do you feel like we have the capacity internally as, you know, as we are today, to hold all of those relationships? Or would a structure like this, do you think, enhance and support these efforts?
So I, I think the answer to the first question is, is, yeah, yes, we could certainly, you know, we're always looking to improve and enhance our outreach efforts and make sure that we're capturing the, you know, the broadest, you know, possible, you know, portion of our, our community. And, and so that's been sort of a constant struggle that we've had is, is trying to make sure that we're reaching as many people as we can with our outreach, with our engagement. And so having people that could help us do that, yeah, absolutely, that would be helpful. The best structure to, to make, to, to execute that, I think it could, it could be in a number of ways. I mean, it could be handled at the staff level, I think, through the diversity, equity, and inclusivity staff committee with just a, a, potentially a different subcommittee setup that, that focuses strictly on community outreach and engagement and works with, with folks externally. It could be set up as, as a task force with council appointments. There's, there's a number of different ways. I don't think there's any one necessarily right way to do it. I think the, the goal is still the same regardless of how we structure it.
Okay, I mean, I think, well, I'll, I'll reserve my opinions for when we're making comments. I'll hold that.
Deputy Mayor Bonilla, you have additional questions?
Yeah, just, just one last question. In my reading, it sounded like, I think you mentioned, Drew, 30 members of city staff involved in this effort. And you mentioned Garcia and Johnson. So, but in my reading, it seemed as though the focus there was looking at diversity, equity, inclusion within the city organization. Is that correct?
Uh, that's the initial focus, yes.
Okay.
But once, you know, that's sort of the phase one aspect, phase two would be sort of more external with engagement and community events. But there's nothing that would prevent us necessarily from accelerating that and, and, and putting it on more of a priority for that, for that committee.
Okay, and, and then I just want to say that I'm torn because I think there's value in the Brown Acted Committee too, that could have up to two council members on it. But it's, it's kind of like, I think if I remember the public and I were looking at, I would think, oh, it's, it's a cast of the same old characters, right? That's why I'm leaning more towards something that we could create more of the public, right? So just to share those thoughts. I'll come back with more comments later. Thanks.
Okay, one last follow-up, follow-up question I had, Drew, was, was there any reason why the, the structure for this small business subcommittee that you're proposing wouldn't work well for the diversity and equity committee?
No, I think that structure could work if that's, if that's the direction council wants to go. We could absolutely make that work.
Is there any particular reason why you, you chose the, your recommended one over, or is it just?
I think that with the, the small business, we, we really wanted to ensure that we were going to have flexibility to, to maneuver continued uncertain times. And we, so we thought staff-driven was, was the, the best way to go. Just based on the discussions that had been had at the, at the January 30th special meeting, I, I got the impression that there was more interest from council on doing something a little more formal with, with the diversity and equity task force. So that's really the, the, the reason behind that recommendation. But we can easily adjust that to do something staff-driven, you know, based on the, the decision tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that was a lot of questions. I'd like to open it up to public comment right now.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, our first speaker is Lisa Diaz Nash.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you very much, Drew and your team for making these recommendations. I wanted to comment on both of the small business and DEI priorities. Number one, I think the city has done a great job in city staff, and particularly Jennifer Chen, on reaching out to the small business community. I think this, we all agree that this has to continue in a very high visibility way. I would really suggest as the task force goes forward, it maintains flexibility, but also has a focus on all types of small business. I think there's been a preponderance of focus on restaurants, which was critical. But there are a lot of small businesses in San Mateo that really feel as if they haven't had their fair shake at what happens. So I think that's a great opportunity to address that. And, and I think it's also an opportunity to go out with another survey of what small businesses think is necessary now. Because the great survey that was done was done a while ago. And then moving over to DEI, I will defer to whatever people think is the best structure. What I think is most important is keeping it very high visibility, high spotlight. Because I hear time and time again from people that, oh, there is a DEI focus today, but six months from now, it'll move on to something else. And I think by keeping it in some kind of a, whether it's formal or Brown Act, I will defer on that. But really keeping it in the front of people's eyes and having residents and nonprofits on it, I think is really important. I think the, the general plan recommendation, there's been a lot of discussion about the lack of specific resident representation. So I think really keeping those stakeholders on whatever formation you come up with will be important because this is a critical area to stay focused on. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carol Eldridge.
Good evening. This is Carol Eldridge, and I would like to offer some thoughts on behalf of One San Mateo this evening. We have a special interest in the section of the report on community engagement and the equity task force that was, that was proposed. So we thought that as described, the task force was, you know, addressing a very narrow sliver of what it potentially could contribute. So we would like to see it take on a deeper and more meaningful mission. And I'm specifically referring to trying to develop lines of communication to the marginalized members of the, the community. As Drew said, this has been a constant struggle. And some of the council members have already kind of echoed the need to try to develop these lines of communication. If we could do this, I mean, we could access these lines in order to get the word out about, you know, all kinds of opportunities across the full range of civic life, whether it be boards and commissions, the general plan, or SB 91, which isn't a local initiative, but it was a state initiative that offers enormous opportunity for both tenants and landlords in the community. And for tenant advocates, SB 91 really dramatized the potential importance of lines of communication, such as I'm talking about. So, you know, we envision a task force of maybe 12 to 15 people, whether it's overseen by a, a staff member. I mean, I'm receptive to that idea. But, you know, we need to make inroads on this problem. It has been a constant struggle. And if we are really going to achieve equity, diversity, and inclusion, it needs to be around the entirety of our civic life. We need to get many more people involved who haven't been in the past. So I, I want to thank you for turning your attention to this. This is something that's very important to us, and I encourage you to keep working on it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have no other speakers?
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to council for additional questions or comments. We'd like to kick off. Councilmember Lee?
I, I'm strongly supportive of the staff recommendation to form the, the business outreach task force and in the structure that was recommended. And I'm happy to see that, that come to fruition if council agrees. And in terms of the diversity equity task force, I, you know, I, I have a background in community organizing, community engagement. I think that this is a real opportunity for us to be, be custodians of, of community relationships which need, need maintenance and they need nurturing over the long haul. And, and they can be, really be the bridge to the level of community engagement that we want to see across all of our initiatives. And so, you know, I, I strongly favor the formation of a broad-based, you know, I, I think a 12 to 15-seat task force or committee that, that represents stakeholders, you know, representatives from the school community, from the faith-based community, from the neighborhoods, from our core service agencies, and even our business community members. I, I, I think that we will, as a city, would be better served. Our communication strategies would be naturally improved, and there would be a really strong, you know, sort of reciprocal relationship that could come out of cultivating this relationship and holding it and, and, and putting some more structure around it. I'm, I'm open to the, the, the suggestion of this task force forming and then being spearheaded under the, you know, the staff DEI task force. You know, if that's a more streamlined and efficient way to. Um, you know, if that's a more streamlined and efficient way to do that, then then so be it. Um, you know, uh, if that if that makes more sense, you know, from a from an operational standpoint, I think that, you know, that I let's let's do what makes the most sense. Um, if there's a trade-off though of of bringing it under staff and not giving that structure um and that body, the level of community visibility that um that might be had if it was formed um directly by council action and and in a Brown Act uh Task Force Committee structure, then then I would err on the side of of prioritizing visibility. Um, I I think that um, I think that 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 the point that Ms. Nash was making about not wanting DI to be a fad and wanting it to actually be an integrated strategy um over the, you know, over many years and um into into the future. I um, I think that prioritizing visibility and centering it um in in a a clear structure with with large membership makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Uh, Councilmember Gothos, sorry, your hand up.
Thank you. Um, I think that there's a lot of value in making it a Brown Act Committee. I think that Carol Eldridge really nailed it when she talked about having a cross-section of the community uh really serve on this board, that there's value in that. Um, I agree with the comments from Ms. Nash and also from Councilmember Lee. So uh, with regards to diversity and inclusion, I recognize the the increased staff time that it will require, but I think that there's value there and I think that uh, we as a council have made it a priority and this is how we follow through on that. So I uh, agree with the previous comments. And I also uh, agree with the staff recommendation for the small business uh task force as well. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, with regards to the Business uh uh Committee, I would, uh, I agree it's needed and we should uh task a um um uh Committee to uh conduct those efforts and uh to the extent that it would need to have or be Brown acted, uh, I I think that would be fine. Um, now then looking at the diversity, equity, and inclusion, I'm thinking that I really liked what um, Councilmember uh Lee and Gothos had to say. Um, and especially appreciated what Carol Eldridge had to say, um, and Lisa Nash. I think uh to be broad, flexible, um, able to make changes. Uh, if the structure needs some changing as we're going along, we should be able to do that. Um, but mostly I favor something that members of the public um who may be uh live in some neighborhoods and they are um, they they have, they might have some fear about government. So having city council members may not be the best thing. But I like having the idea that somebody from staff from the inclusion and and uh diversity uh task force that we have already created here that Drew described with thirty members um to maybe um uh work with that group and um and I think be able to bring reports, recommendations. Um, uh, you know, and uh and report progress um to the council and um so that we're able to be aware of what's going on. And at some point, if we need to change, like I say, flexibility, I think is really key. So um, if it's not working out quite exactly like we're hoping it would, uh, which I think is to the broadest benefit for those people in the community who need the most help. Um, then I think we could look to restructure it too. So thanks.
Thank you, and uh Councilmember Pappen.
Um, okay, so I'll start with the business one. Um, I think it sounds like it is at once inclusive and flexible. And so I certainly support the structure as proposed. Um, with respect to the DEI, I would um yeah, I would support as outlined by Deputy Mayor Bonilla and Gothos and Lee. Um, I am, one thing I would throw in the mix there is perhaps uh council might set some specific goals that it would like to see from this task force. Because as I said, I'm I'm very intrigued by the programming element of it. And um, so I'd like to, you know, maybe throw some goals out there that maybe the task force can take on. We have the ones to certainly take review our commission and whatnot, but I think that um there might be, in other words, you can have the task force report to the council, but I think it might also be important for our council to perhaps give some goals and assignments that they might like to see from the task force. And then that way we we have some real follow-up and maybe some some goals that we we've wanted to reach um and we can ensure that they get reached. It doesn't become this amorphous task force that, oh, let's throw it over there and and everything kind of, you know, comes under the sun there. I I'd like it to have some real defined goals that we can actually achieve for folks. So that's where I come at it. Um, but uh, I'm excited about it. I think it's a real opportunity, as I said, for bona fide conversations in our community and uh a way of celebrating diversity and embracing inclusivity and equity. So I I I'm really excited about it. That's where I come from. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna give some comments and I'll go back to you, Deputy Mayor. Um, okay, so I uh, I totally support uh staff's recommendation on the small business uh subcommittee. Um, I would also be very interested in serving as liaison if that's the direction the council wants to go. Um, and I I just think it makes a lot of sense. I thought it was well thought out. And um regarding the 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 Diversity and Equity Subcommittee, um, I think everything I've heard tonight by a fellow council, my fellow council members makes a lot of sense. Um, I think there's a lot of um there's a lot of potential for uh for a subcommittee um like that. And it's gonna um, it's gonna have this council be sort of putting its uh their money where their mouth is in terms of actually doing something about all these goals that we that we say we hold near and dear, and I think it's the right thing to do. So um, I really appreciate uh my fellow council members' comments because I I think that um I I learned a lot from that discussion and I I think it's it's definitely the right way to go. Okay, uh, Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Yeah, I just wanted to to piggyback on what Diane said about goals. I think goals bring focus. It makes it measurable. I think that it's a wise thing to do. Thanks.
Okay, so um Drew, uh, do you, what additional information do you need from us, if any?
Uh, I think the only thing I need to know is um for the small business recovery, um, if there's gonna be a council subcommittee to to liaise, to liaise with that committee. I know Mayor Rodriguez, you mentioned you were interested in that. It, or is it gonna be a two-person subcommittee? Um, and then and then on the Diversity and Equity uh Task Force, um, we have the direction that we need. We will um come back later in the fiscal year with um, you know, form to formally form that and and go through a process to uh recruit members.
Okay, I can join the mayor if you need me. Sorry. Unless somebody else would, I don't want to take it if somebody else would like to, but I would certainly be happy to serve. Rick says no way.
Okay, I think you have two volunteers as liaison, Drew.
All right, thank you. And just, and sorry, just one, one more confirmation, what um for the diversity and equity, we are gonna go with a with a formal Brown Act Task Force. Is that correct? That's what I thought I heard.
I thought I heard as well.
Okay.
And uh, and then you, and then we would figure out who's serving on that at the later time.
Yeah, we'll we'll bring another report back uh later in the the fiscal year to to talk about next steps with that.
Perfect.
I just like clarify, that was not what I supported, but that's okay.
Yeah, no, I thought it was that we weren't gonna have the, it was the whole council would liaise or whatever with the task force.
All right, well, this is why we summarize at the end. Um, let's uh what was, what was your understanding, uh, Councilmember Lee, since you were, because I saw your head nodding, but then, not.
Oh, I I thought that we had agreed to do um a Brown Act Committee of twelve to fifteen with stakeholder representation. Um, and um, you know, and then we can have, you know, put like the the details of which which uh one or two council members would liaison uh would be determined and any potential existing commissioners um and seats for existing commissioners would be determined also. Is that something that would need to be figured out right now? Okay. Was that, was, what, what did other people hear?
I would be okay with other council members liaise, but I don't think we should be in the room all the time when people are trying to talk about their issues.
Right, and then I thought we, I mean, I'm I'm happy to volunteer as well, but I I didn't because I thought we would all have a chance to chime in on various goals and the following up of the goals. So that's why I was, I thought that's where we were headed, but.
As progress was reported to us. I think that's what you're saying, Diane.
And and if, uh, as a, as a suggestion, we we could certainly wo- have this run staff-driven for a period of time with, you know, quarterly reports to council and to determine if if we're meeting, you know, meeting council's interest with respect to running this at the at the staff level through the the DEI Committee. And if we are and we're meeting the goals and objectives, then then great, we can continue. If we're not, we could adjust as as Deputy Mayor Bonilla had talked about and 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 do it differently. And and maybe then at that point form it as a as a formal Brown Act Task Force if it's not working the way that that we had hoped it would, if if that helps.
I think there's some members of the public that spoke tonight, well, one who has a real interest in trying to have an organized effort and and will actually work with all of the members of the public who come to the committee to take, you know, set goals, be focused, try and reach uh landmarks, uh deadlines, uh whatever there's they're trying to do. Um, I think it's important though that we let them do it because I think part of the problem is that a lot of people have felt left out of the process or maybe as though we haven't really reached out to them. Well, I think this is the way of reaching out by saying, you don't have to talk to council members because there's, who knows what people say about council members out there. I hear all sorts of stuff. But you can work with a bunch of other members of the public and they don't have to be citizens. They can just be people that live in the neighborhood.
And so that would comprise the task force that works with staff and then reports back to the council in its entirety, or the council in its entirety can come up with ideas that it would like to see the task force implement. That, what you were, okay.
So you're, so who is on board with what what Rick and or what Deputy Mayor Bonilla and uh Councilmember Pappen had just, is that, is that pretty much? Are you, are you agreeing with that, uh, Councilmember Gothos?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I see, I see value in opening it up and making everybody eligible, especially non-citizens, people not uh registered to vote. So those kinds of people should be eligible to be on this committee. Um, I also understand trying to monitor staff commitment, so if it's not a Brown Act Committee, there's less staff time that's gonna be taken up, but we should be promoting this and and certainly uh, sending it out to the community so that everybody knows about it. Part of the reason that I thought maybe having it be a Brown Act Committee is that it would get more airtime, so to speak. Um, we can give it that airtime without making it Brown Act Committee, so that's fine.
I'm okay with that too.
That makes a lot.
Maybe we could, if I could add one more thing, maybe we could have a a study session that just maybe does set forth some specific things that we would like to see the task force um put together. Because then it could, to your point, Councilmember Gothos, it could elevate the um, the, what do you say? The uh
Visibility.
Thank you. The visibility of the committee with some various, or task force with some very specific goals.
Right, and we should, we should make news of it on our website and through uh Twitter and our other media feeds.
And that makes a lot of sense to me as well. Okay, uh, Drew, how do you feel about that now?
I feel good. I feel like we have the direction we need and um then the next step will be to come back with a a study session um on the formation of this uh staff-driven task force to get council direction and get some feedback on uh potential goals for the the task force.
Perfect. Okay, that was a great discussion. And now I'd like to move on to item number two on the agenda, if I can find it. Um, city's, City Council Strategic Plan Draft Review, and we have Denise Denise Garcia presenting to us. It's all yours, Denise.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, and good evening. My name is Denise Garcia, and I'm the Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. I'm here today to present a draft review of the City Council Strategic Plan. Here's the agenda for this presentation today. First, we will um review the goal-setting process timeline, followed by a draft review. And that will examine the objectives that require action from today council, require financial resources, and require staff resources. Lastly, I will conclude this presentation with next steps for City Council. So here's our timeline of the current City Council Goal Setting Process. The first step of this process took place on January thirtieth, where a city council revised the list of objectives, added new objectives, and adjusted and assigned priority indicators to those objectives. The second step is today, March fifteenth. City Council will review the proposed work plan items and the additional resources required for implementation of each objective. City Council will also ask the public if there are any comments they'd like to make related to the draft strategic plan. And the final step of this process is the approval of the strategic plan with the proposed objectives for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year, which will take place April fifth. Now we'll move forward with our um draft review section of this presentation. First, we'll review the highlighted action items. Highlighted in yellow on the draft strategic strategic plan, which was attached to the Agenda Report, are items that staff flagged for City Council to consider amending based on the recommendations made by staff. So on the left side of this presentation, you'll see the council objectives that are highlighted in that strategic plan. And on the right side, we have the recommended changes um proposed by staff. So the first objective is listed here, um, to evaluate options and funding sources to dredge the Marina. And staff is recommending the City Council change the objective to read, evaluate funding options for storm system activities and improvements, including dredging the Marina. The second um objective listed is to provide an update on the city's communication strategy, including efforts to um har- reach hard-to-reach segments of the population. And staff recommends removing this item from the strategic plan since a study session on this topic is planned for this spring, and it will be completed prior to the end of this current year's um fiscal year. Staff anticipates no further action is needed in order to meet this objective. The third objective listed is increase public awareness of the community benefits from development projects. The proposed work plan will be completed this fiscal year, which is why staff recommends removing it from the strategic plan. And the last highlighted objective is to evaluate downtown parking and transit incentive programs for employees. This item was intended in part to mitigate the impact of the loss of the surface parking lots during the time when the new Fifth Avenue Garage will be constructed. And since the garage will start um construction in late twenty twenty-one, as a result, staff is recommending the item should be assigned as an A priority. Next, we'll move forward with our draft review and review the financial resources um that are required by new by some of the council objectives. Um, the first one would require fifty thousand dollars to complete the CPID code update. And a funding source for this objective is the Advanced Planning Fund. The second objective um will require an additional twenty thousand dollars to replace damaged uh materials if the effort is extended into fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty uh twenty-two. Possible funding sources include Measure A, Measure S, and General Fund. The third objective will require approximately a hundred thousand dollars per year for a Safe Route to School program, which includes the cost of a part-time coordinator. And possible funding sources for this one include Measure S and the General Fund. The fourth objective is a multi-year effort and will require a hundred The fourth objective is a multi-year effort and will require $100,000 in funds for consulting services. And also an additional $200,000 will be needed for updates to standard details and, um, specifications. These are specific to the sections of the municipal code related to Public Works, um, Department Development Review. And funding sources for this one include Construction Services Fund and Capital Improvement Program. The last object, objective may require $30,000 for a statistically valid community survey in early 2022. To determine likely voter support if a revenue measure is proposed for November 2022. And this will be funded by the general fund. The last part of the review consists of a review of objectives that will require additional staffing resources. Or will divert staff away from other initiatives. The first objective listed here in this table may require staff to hire an additional environmental compliance inspector. Which will cost approximately $132,000. If enhanced trash inspection and street sweeping program is recommended. This position will be funded by the sewer and solid waste funds and would be an ongoing expense. Oh, my apologies. The second objective listed here may require hiring and training of new. Um, new and several staff members if, uh, city council requests door-to-door outreach for the general plan. Staff does not recommend this approach to outreach as it will cost, um, it will add cost and time to the general plan update. The last two objectives were discussed in the previous presentation. So based on the direction the city council provided for both. The Diversity Equity Task Force and the Small Business Recovery Committee. Diversion of staffs, uh, may occur from both the city, city manager's office and, um, city clerk's office. And as a result, they'll, they will be pulled away from other work plan items. The next steps for city council are to, one, review the proposed work plans and resources required. And to share any feedback or recommend any adjustments to the current draft strategic plan, um, that was just presented. And that concludes my presentation and I'm open to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Uh, council member, uh, Papin has a question. Or.
Yeah, quick question. Thank you, Denise. Well done. Um. So can you go back to the if you have to hire somebody for, uh, street sweeping and blah, 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 and what will determine that? And storm capture, I think it was, stormwater capture or trash capture.
Would you like me to share my screen or just share a little bit more about that?
Objective. Whichever you prefer is fine by me.
Okay.
You said it would be about 132 grand and.
Yes, to hire an environmental compliance inspector, and that's only if the, um. On go, if the street sweeping, um, measure is, is recommended by, the enhanced resweeping is, um. Is recommended by city council. So and if a ZUI is on. Perhaps you can elaborate a little bit more.
Okay, I, I thought it was, uh, and a regulatory agency might require us to do it. And we would need to hire somebody. If that's not the case, that would just be something coming from city council.
Well, there, there are, um, I mean, Azalea Mitch, uh, Acting Public Works Director, there are, um, the inspector. Uh, position, so, uh, they would be responsible for a number of things, including ongoing. Increase in regulatory compliance indeed. However, since these were proposed, um. We, we do need more staff and, uh, so these were, would be added tasks to that, to those two, um, council objectives.
So it's kind of twofold then?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay, I got you. I got you. And then on the, um. Going door-to-door, I, uh, for the public, uh, I mean, for the general plan. I wasn't anticipating that we could hire any, needed to hire anybody to do it. I thought that we could use some of our. City staff and I would certainly volunteer to do it. And I'm sure my, some of my other council members might be interested as well. Although I won't speak on their behalf to volunteer, but I, that's what I was envisioning rather than, uh, a bona fide. Let's go hire a group of people to get out there and do it. But, um. It would, it be possible to analyze. Doing it with the troops we have.
I don't, I don't think we, we did analyze that. And I mean, ultimately, that's going to take time away from doing. Other tasks and it will extend the time of, of the general plan. Um, potentially significantly depending on how much, how much outreach was done, but. We don't, we, we don't have existing staff capacity to, to, to go to, to door-to-door. So it would either mean something else doesn't get done. Or we would have to hire, bring on more people to do it.
You may want to consider some of our volunteer resources. Community volunteers to help us. Anyway, I'm not going to give up on that concept. I recognize they may not be staff resources or money to do it. But I think it's a, it's a, an important part to the outreach.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Um, we're in a, if you're, you have more questions. So, uh, council member Papin, you're done with your questions? I think that's a yes and.
I apologize, Mayor. Yes, I'm done.
No worries.
All right.
That Deputy Mayor Bonilla has questions. No, he doesn't.
Right now, no.
Okay.
I was going to comment on her comments.
We'll, we'll be there shortly. Uh, it looks like we have at least one member of the public that wants to speak. Uh, any other questions from council members? Uh, council member Lee.
Well, no, Denise.
I have a question about continuing the Safe Streets Initiative. I've gotten a lot of feedback. Um, positive about it and also, um, but put, you know, mostly really strong feedback about the downtown street closures. And so. I was just wondering, you know, if you could give us some, um, some indication from staff, like what is your. What's your sense in terms of the continuation of Safe Streets? Uh, is that something that we're continuing to evaluate and iterate and scale? Um, scale back if necessary or maintain the status quo? Like what, what's really driving that, that cost?
I defer again to Azalea Mitch, the Acting Public Works Director.
Hi, thank you, Denise. Well, we are seeking direction from you all. Um, this is an effort that does require additional resources. Uh, we have materials that we purchased through our operating, um, budget, uh, this last fiscal year and, uh, and so some of that. Has been damaged. So if the effort is continued, we will need to replace and also to continue renting some of the, uh, message boards.
And, uh, if I may, just to clarify, the Safe Streets effort is very distinct from the downtown street closure so that we're evaluating. Separately, as you may be aware, there's, um, currently a community survey that's out and that's something we plan to return to council on within the next few months to discuss that. They're, they're really two distinct initiatives.
Yes, absolutely. Um, I understood. My question though was, do you, do you have a read on? The can, like the need to continue Safe Streets as, you know, as we move into, uh, different tiers of shutdown, you know, more accessibility, higher rates of, um, of vaccination. And do you, um, do you have some, um, some community input or evaluation that you can share with us in terms of? The need, the community need and, um, and the feedback that we've gotten thus far.
So we have not done an additional, you know, new surveys on that. Um, so that's something that we can definitely consider doing. We, when this was initiated, we were really focusing on the lack of outdoor space and the safety, but yes, things have changed. So. We, uh, the question was, should this effort be continued? Um, but we haven't solicited the community impact. Or the community survey feedback.
You know, I think I would just add, I think when we, when we started this initially, it was intended to be temporary. You know, with that said, we're, we're a year into the pandemic. Um, and, and, you know, hopefully the end is in sight, but, um, you know, as, as Azalea mentioned, it is, um, you know, somewhat resource intensive. Um, they, the, the staff needs to go out and do a lot of repositioning, um, and, and address sort of items that go missing. Um, I think that our, our initial intent was that this would be a temporary program and that we would, you know, focus. Um, on more permanent efforts as it relates to the Bike Ped Master Plan going forward. Um, you know, but with that said, we haven't, we haven't not gotten any feedback, um, so that we would need to, to do that, um, before we made any, any. Permanent or brought back any recommendations to council on what we should do with this program permanently.
Were you planning on, um, getting that feedback or is, or would you need like council direction to do that? Or what was the plan if this wasn't brought up right now?
Um, we've been, we've been talking about it internally, but it's been kind of in a holding pattern because we're. Things, I mean, I guess things are starting to change now with things opening up more, but, but, um. It, it's been something that we know we needed to address, but we just haven't yet. So I think this will, will spur us to, to get moving on getting some community feedback on. Um, you know, kind of how, how folks feel about the program overall.
Great, thank you. Uh, more questions from council members? Okay, I'm not seeing any questions. I'd like to open up a public comment.
Uh, first speaker is Lisa Diaz Nash.
Good evening again, council members. I would like to commend the council and staff. On a robust plan, uh, the blue skies to today, there's been a lot of meat added to the bones and it's exciting to see. As specifically though, as we increase our infrastructure and housing construction. It's really important to keep investing in quality of life initiatives. So that residents see the value of our city's efforts today and not just what is promised for tomorrow. And I would recommend that the city take a real look. At revamping and increasing widespread communication of these initiatives and impact. Currently, my neighborhood Baywood is undergoing some, uh. Reconstruction of streets as part of measure S, which is a great long-term benefit. But there is, there's been some change due to what the public works people found. And the public works is now amending its communication strategy because there was insufficient communication. So I would really. Encourage that across all the quality of life initiatives. Number two. I would endorse the specific recommendation about tangibly taking action to deal with the Marina and what the future of the Marina is. Because people have been talking about this for years. It's potentially a very high dollar. Project, but we've got to start somewhere and I appreciate the council trying to really zone in on what can be done and take action on this. Uh, and it should be regularly reported on. And then thirdly, in terms of the general plan, I totally endorse the idea of a, a statistically reliable survey being taken. But I would also strongly recommend more community outreach groups and, and ways of getting. Face-to-face or Zoom to Zoom with people. So that as the recommendations come up, or how do we deal with housing? How do we deal with parks? How do we deal with everything? That community members see the real life impact of what is happening, which is difficult to do in a survey. So I would. Strongly recommend that that be added to the general plan. Uh, so thank you very much for your efforts in all these regards.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to close a public comment and bring it back to the council for additional questions or comments. Uh, council member Papin.
I'm just a little unclear on what is required of us at this moment. Uh, there were dollar items attached to some of the items. Are we looking for an okay on that? If Denise, if you could guide us a little more on what you're looking for.
Yes, of course. So the first is that we have a few highlighted action items that were on your draft strategic plan. And so we would like the, we would like to ask you to, um. You know, either approve or make amendments to the recommended, um, changes that staff made or proposed. And I can go back to those slides if you'd like to see what those changes are. There were four highlighted items. And then we'd like you to review the proposed work plans. Um, which include the objectives that have additional resource requirements, um, including those financial ones and. The, um, staff, staff ones. And lastly, just we'd like of an approval of, of those recommend, of those objectives or. Adjustments that you'd like us to make to that draft strategic plan.
So the first one is the highlighted changes on the strategic plan, right? Maybe we could hit those.
I'll go ahead and, yeah.
And Madame Clerk, I, I think our, our, one of our public speakers is still, um, on, is not on mute. If you can maybe try to, to mute her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did that.
No worries. Okay, um. Wait, I, I'm sorry, I got a little bit distracted. Or were you done, council member Papin?
Um, yeah, well, Denise is taking us through what she's requiring of us and she's starting by showing us the first couple of slides where she says. Do you want to modify the strategic plan as outlined here, the recommended changes? And I would be fine with those.
Okay, so maybe we'll just go through these really quickly. Does anybody have any changes that are proposed or not fine with the proposed, um, changes by staff?
I'm okay with them.
Looks like we're all good with those. O- okay. And then what additional, um, additional topics? I know several things come up. Does anybody want to talk about any, any additional? Well, I guess before we go there, um, Denise, are there any other besides these highlighted review items? What were, were there any other things specifically you needed for us before we start going on some tangents?
No, we just needed approval if, if you'd like to make these, if, if you approve of these recommended changes. And we also just want to know if, if the, if your direction on the strategic plan changes at all, knowing the different resources required.
Okay. Do we have any comments on that second item? Uh, Deputy Mayor Bonilla.
Uh, thank you. Um, I actually want to go back just for a minute to the lagoon. Um, I got quite a few calls over the last couple of years and I've been out and walked around and talked with people. The lagoon is in serious need of, uh, maintenance. It's, it's horribly silted up. It's not serving, uh, its purpose as well as it could. Um, and it's actually a wildlife habitat. Um, it's not serving that purpose very well either. So I would urge us to find, um. Funding and I, I think we're going to be looking at funding at some point soon, maybe some federal dollars coming to us. I'm not sure what plans may be for that, but, um, I'm thinking we may be able to find some money. I know it's going to be a costly item. Dredging is, uh, probably not cheap, but it's very necessary. Um. Looking at the other items that were highlighted, yellow on there, uh, I was okay with, um. Yes, um, changing the one to an A priority, given the Fifth Avenue Garage, which is the parking issue from a B to an A. Um, uh, I think we need to evaluate downtown parking and transit and center progress for employees. Yes. Um, and increase, uh, public awareness of community benefits and development projects. That's a great idea. Okay, we need to actually play that up because so many people don't realize. That when we negotiate projects, we actually do get things for the community. And, uh, it needs to be, some news needs to be made of it. So, um, and that was a great idea when it came up, uh, at the Blue Sky Meeting. Can I see the next slide, please?
Those were, those, those were the only four items that required immediate action. Um, the rest were just. A review of the objectives that do have additional resources required in order to meet implementation. And so we would just like to ask if your direction is changing at all, knowing the different resources required.
Uh, you know, on continuing, I'm okay with minimizing parking impacts. On the, uh, continue the Safe Streets item, uh, I really think we should find out how much they're be, being used now. Um, and, uh, whether we need to maintain that. I think that I, I agree that it was intended to be a temporary thing. Uh, I'm not sure, uh, that it's having quite the impact, uh, benefit for the public that it had before. Uh, by just remaining there and it is an item that's costing money. Um, in terms of bicycle pedestrian projects and programs, I think that we need to commit the funds to make that happen. I was on the committee that approved that. I think Joe was too on the, the, uh, Public Works Commission back when this was brought about. I think it was 2011. So it's time to actually, uh, long overdue, actually according to many people I speak with. To actually get more focused on and, uh, contribute some funding towards making these things happen. Regarding safe routes to school. I happen to know there, there was recently a call for projects that I think C CAG, uh, was looking at and. It was only, I think there were $2.8 million available and only 1.2 or 1.4 million were taken with projects. Um, I'm thinking that if we were to ask, uh, C CAG to call for a second round of, uh, projects for that funding before we lose it. That, uh, the safe routes to. That, uh, the safe routes to school would be an easy, uh, yes for that. So, um, I would urge us to look for money there for the safe routes to school. And also things like our, uh, Twenty-Eighth Avenue Bike, uh, Program, uh, Bike Boulevard. Thank you.
Can you go to that seventh, uh, slide number seven, uh, Denise, just to make sure? What about, um, do you have any comments on those, uh, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, relate, oh yes, we definitely need to look at, uh, development review. Uh, process and identify opportunities for streamlining. Uh, it's been a source of aggravation. Uh, for, uh, both me and some other people that I talk with regularly for some time now. Uh, portfolio options for, uh, sustained enhanced revenues. Um, yes, community values, I, I think it's, um, community survey twenty twenty-two is definitely something we need to have. Because things are changing fast around here. Um, and people are becoming more aware of things they didn't know about. And so I think that awareness is something we need to gauge. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I think we've all said that we're okay with the, the changes and wording. So, um, Councilmember Lee, do you want to talk about, um, are there any differences in the financial resources, the green slides? That you, uh, prefer, you would want to change?
Uh, yes, I, um. I guess for, for the safe streets, um, initiative, I, I think that it's. Worthwhile to get some more feedback before committing any additional resources. Um, for the proposal of hiring a part-time coordinator. Um, uh, to support the, or to implement the bicycle and pedestrian projects and programs. Um, I actually am not sure that's, um, that would be the approach I would take. Um, you know, I, I have kids that walk to school, um, and, uh, every day and walk through their parks and rec programs. And, um, and I think that the money that we are spending to hire, um, and share costs with, uh, crossing guards is really well spent. And that, um, that goes a long way to really keeping our streets safe. I think, um, I would, I would err on the side of utilizing, um, hundreds of thousands of dollars per year. To direct infrastructure improvements, um, and not to a staff position. So that would be, uh, um, a recommendation I would, I would make. Um, can we go to the next slide? Uh, I, I fully support the, um, the additional cost to clean up our municipal code. And absolutely, um, think thirty thousand dollars as well spent, uh, for the continuation of the statistically valid community survey. And I, um, and I, and I favor it being, um, you know, every other year. I hopefully we can continue on that rhythm moving forward. Did that cover everything?
Think so. Thank you, uh, Councilmember Lee. Uh, Councilmember Pappen?
Just a quick question on that coordinator. I, I get where Councilmember Lee is coming from. I'm just wondering, did you put in there coordinator because of what, uh, Vice Mayor, um, Benia had mentioned? That it may be pursuant to a grant that you could get from C CAG? Is that what the thinking was there?
Hi, Azelia Mitchell again. No, it wasn't. It was the model that we had grant funding for. We actually had hired a part-time coordinator. And so it was following that same approach. In terms of, but not, not, I mean, the request here was if the council desired to actually allocate general fund money. Since we did lose that grant funding, uh, two years ago. But we can definitely continue to look for grant funding opportunities.
Yeah, because I do think it is out there, uh, Deputy Mayor Benia was right, there, there is, uh, a, a chunk of money, like about a million two that. Wasn't, um, spoken for, so there's an opportunity there. So I would, I would support it to the extent you can get it somewhere else. That's why I'm coming from. Everything else I'm okay with.
Okay, great. Um, Councilmember Gotoz, do you have any thoughts on this?
I agree with Councilmember Pappen and Councilmember Lee.
Okay, great. All right, um, so for me, um. I, I agree with Councilmember Lee on the, on the, the person, uh, or hiring the, the officer. Um, I think that, you know, we gotta, that money could be better spent in other areas besides hiring somebody. Um, but I, I'm undecided on that, but I think that we should look at our other options, um, first. Kind of what, um, what I thought I heard Councilmember Lee saying. Um, let's see, uh. Continuing the safe streets, uh, again, I, I agree with some of the comments before that, but you know, before we start. Um, uh, sinking more funds into that, I, I do want to hear more from the community. Um, I've heard a lot of positive things, uh, about it, but I've also heard some, some negative things. And I think it's before we start spending money on it, we need to have that discussion. I'm wondering if that maybe should be a, a study session coming up. Or, or something where we're, where we're digging into that a lot more, because that seems to be a, a very, uh, important topic as we. Um, head back into normalcy. Um, and then can you go to, uh, number seven, slide number seven? Definitely agree with the survey and I agree with, um, everything on that site, so I'm good with that. Uh, Deputy Mayor, uh, Benia has some additional questions or comments?
Yeah, I actually have one more, uh, request for clarification. On the item regarding the safe routes to school. Um, can you put that one up again? It says, which includes costs for a part-time coordinator. What's the rest of that proposed to be?
So the, no, the total cost is for that part-time coordinator. So that was the part-time with benefits.
Oh, okay. Uh, it sounded like there might have been something else there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Denise, how do we do?
Great, uh, we just have the last two slides in orange that, um, are an overview of the objectives that have staff resources.
Oh, okay. So you need, you need, uh, feedback on these as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of each of us, okay. Um, does anybody want to? Deputy Mayor Benia, I see your hand up.
Yeah, um, regarding the, uh, additional environmental compliance inspector. I think Azelia inferred that, uh, that person would be, uh, uh, in charge of what I think. This is really, really important work that we need to make sure it gets done right. And then, uh. Um, she implied there was some other purpose that are, or task this person would be performing. Can you remind us that, Azelia?
Sure, so there are two objectives. It's, uh, the one is meeting the one hundred percent trash reduction mandate. And the second one is developing the anti-littering trash outreach campaign. So we do have additional regulatory requirements associated with the inspections and the needs for the stormwater system. However, we can also, uh, use this additional F T E to help with the, uh, with the anti-littering campaign.
Uh, yeah, right. Both of which are, in my view, really very important things. Uh, in fact, there are some hotspots for littering that maybe this person could focus on. And, um, but this is, these are things that we're spending a lot of money on the one hundred percent trash reduction. Um, I think it would be good if we put somebody in charge of making sure that it's all working right. Um, so I would support that. Updating the general plan, um, several new staff members to conduct order. I, I think, I like ideas about, uh, giving the council, uh, uh. Uh, I, uh, information that we need, uh, we could go door to door. Um, and I don't know if we need several new staff members, maybe a couple. But, um, uh, I think staff could put in a, a couple of, uh, one or two days a week, uh, when we can, maybe four hour shifts. But, uh, to do this, it depends on how much outreach there is that actually needs to be done. Do we have an idea of that?
Well, I mean, we're, we're focusing our outreach efforts on, um. You know, the up, upcoming workshops that we have. Um, I do want to point out that we are, that we are putting together a mailer. Um, on the general plan, um, on, you know, getting involved, that's going to go out to every, every household in San Mateo. So that's how we are, we are trying to reach every, every person in San Mateo. And we think that is the most, the most effective and the most cost-effective way to, to go about this. Um, but you know, as I, as I mentioned earlier, w- we just don't have the capacity staff-wise to, to go out door to door. Some, something would have to give, um, you know, either with our day-to-day planning work or, and or with the, the general plan schedule. Because we just, I don't, I don't have the, the additional capacity to, to do that work.
So let me ask, was this intended to, uh, uh, reach the hard-to-reach members of the public? I mean, is it, is it a targeted, uh, approach?
Which, which approach? I'm sorry.
Well, talking about, uh, uh, staff members or anybody who will conduct door-to-door outreach. Is the outreach intended to reach people who have been determined to be a hard, our hard-to-reach population?
Uh, I, I can't answer that. It wasn't, this wasn't a, a staff-driven idea, so I'm not sure what the, what the intent was.
Okay, this was not my idea either at the Blue Sky meeting. Um.
Okay.
Do you want me to interject or do you want me to please?
Go ahead.
Yeah, why don't you go? And just to give everybody a time check, we have ten minutes left.
Nine minutes.
I want to make sure.
Okay, yeah, I'll be very quick. Um, what I'm envisioning is. Yes, to answer Deputy Mayor Benia, it could be hard to reach, um, or it could be just some members of John Q Public. It doesn't have to be completely, we're going to canvas the entire city. But I think we should look at some areas where we're not getting feedback and try to reach them personally. And if there is a mail piece that's going out to encourage people to get, uh, you know, maybe go online to respond about the general plan, that's fine. But it may be an also an opportunity to recruit some volunteers to come help us get out to the community and do some door-to-door canvassing. So I recognize the limited staff resources, that's not lost on me, but I think we can be creative to do. A- a- and again, it doesn't have to be the entire city, but to do some extra route, extra outreach one-on-one.
Right, okay, so, and that, that answered my question very well. It, it is intended to reach, like you said, areas where we're not getting feedback. So that means it would be targeted areas. And I agree with you that, uh, the staff could, I mean, not the staff, council could do that. I'd be willing to work with you on that.
Yeah, and we can, we can get some community volunteers as well. So I, so we will, you and I recommend would support that you're not going to hire other people to go do the door-to-door or to use staff. We'll try to get a volunteer army together to do a little bit of this. Um, okay. Guys, in the interest of time, I, I just, uh, thank you for your volunteering. I'll take you up on it. And I'm okay with a compliance officer, both for the trash program and the, um, uh, the trash recapture.
Okay, um, maybe we'll just go, and I think we have one more slide nine, but maybe just we'll have, um, the other, the, the last three. Comment on these two and then we'll quickly go to the slide number nine. Councilmember Lee or Gotoz, any?
Um, uh, I'll, I'll be very quick. I think that, um, you know. I wonder if, like in, in neighborhoods like North Central. Where the primary driver of, of trash and blight is really dumping. I, I would just suggest that maybe we think about negotiating, um, some enhancements to the, to the recology. Um, a contract that, um, that would support increased, uh, numbers of pickup. Or, um, or some more, uh, for people who live in apartments. I, I just think that there might be other ways to approach this that might be more cost-effective. Um, so, um, I'm. You know, I, I don't feel like I have enough information in terms of like, the. I mean, I, I, I support us reading, reaching our one hundred percent trash reduction mandate. Um, if that, if that's the way to get there is to hire an additional person, then, then I'm, I'm okay with that. But I'm also, I think that there are possibly other strategies that could, um, could get us there at reduced cost. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, with the adjustments to the proposed, proposal of the volunteer-driven outreach strategy. Door-to-door.
Okay, any thoughts, Councilmember Gotoz?
Briefly, um, I agree with the idea that we don't need the general plan, additional staff members. That we can find volunteers or whatever we need. On the one hundred percent trap, trash reduction mandate. And hiring a compliance inspector, um. I have mixed feelings on this. I just, I feel like, uh, this can be a responsibility of many different employees to spot it. And, and to deal with it. It seems to me that the, the regu- the regulatory scheme that's forcing a hundred percent trash. Reduction, um. That spending our, our money on a compliance inspector is not the most efficient way to, to achieve what we're trying to get. Uh, but I'm, I'm open to the will of the council. I know we're going to keep talking about this.
Okay, um, I, I have similar, very similar views. Uh, you know, we're, our city is in, um, is in a hiring freeze right now. And we're, we're looking at cutting costs. Um, I'm very reluctant to, um, to bring on more employees at this time. Um, I definitely think with the general plan update, we can, um, put together an army led by Councilmember, Councilmember Pappen. And Deputy Mayor, uh, Benia. Um, and, and I also, I have very similar feelings as the sentiments of Councilmember Lee. In terms of the hiring additional compliance officer, I, I would need to have more information, uh, about that to, to feel comfortable saying, yeah, that's the way to go. I mean, I, I like the objective, but don't like the impact. So I would have to try to get a little bit more information to be able to weigh that, um, personally. Okay, um, we have five minutes. Can you go to slide nine, just to make sure what, I forgot what that was?
These are the two that were presented earlier.
Got it. Okay, good. Um, do, any other questions? We have, uh, five minutes left. Any other clarifications you need from us before we close out this item?
I think we have all the information we need to move forward. So I'll, uh, take into consideration all the feedback that was shared and relay this with all the department heads. And reevaluate our current draft strategic plan and then come forward with an updated plan.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Could I add something on, uh, Mr. Mayor? Regarding, regarding the, the next to last item that we spoke about with, uh, um, regarding to hiring an additional person for, um. Uh, dealing with trash impact. Um, and I know Councilmember Lee mentioned, maybe we could talk to recology. Um, I want to, uh, ask first, Denise, this is not something that actually you were asking if recology could do, is that correct? Denise?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, with regard to the last item we were talking, the thing before last, regarding additional person to manage, uh, um, uh, trash. Uh, collection, right? So I know the Councilwoman Lee mentioned recology. And I'm on the board at recology and I know a couple of things about, for instance, if somebody moves out of an apartment, they leave a big pile of stuff out along the street. Um, the owner of that building is responsible for that. If the tenants don't remove it, he should, he should call recology. And have it removed, which he can do. Also, uh, everybody in the city has the ability to have two, what we call bulky. Item pickups, uh, twice a year. So if anybody has things that they dump out there at the street. Um, they should be calling recology to come and pick it up. Um, and that's what we really need to do is get that message out. The rec- recology does that a couple of times a year. But whenever we see those piles of apartment emptying stuff in front of buildings, somebody should leave a notice there. Reach out to the owner and tell him this can't stay, it's got to go and here's how you can deal with it. Um, I know Roxanne works on those things, so, um, sometimes things hang around there longer than they should. But we should make a point to try and deal with that somehow. Thanks.
Okay, and I'll close this meeting and we'll see all of you guys in a couple of minutes.